Well, good evening, everyone. We are going to reconvene our open session. And I'd like to ask our vice president, trustee Rydel, to report out actions taken in closed session.
The board took action in closed session to deny an instructor's appeal of an administrative determination of unlawful discrimination, harassment, and retaliation.
Thank you for that. We'll now have the invocation led by trustee Prendergast, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Rydel.
There are so many events that go on in the world, and we get highlighted in the news. And I think it's poignant that our surf team here at Saddleback did so well as to the importance of water safety. There was a young couple in Florida who lost their lives to rip curl, rip current, sorry. And I know that our young surfers are well aware of the dangers of the ocean, but a lot of people aren't. And I think it's important to highlight water safety and knowing your limitations when it comes to being around water, whether it be rivers, streams, lakes, ocean, swimming pool, at all ages. So just want to take a moment of silence for those that have lost their lives not being safe around water. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're now on to 3.5. We've got some champions in the room.
Yes, we do.
All right. I think I'm going to start off with the baseball team. Where are you guys? Some, all right. So I'll say a few words and then invite you all to come up here and get a group photo with the board. But let me just say it is with great pleasure to recognize this Saddleback College men's baseball team as the 2024 state champion. So I understand there was some heartbreak in 2023, and then some of the younger players came through this year and demonstrated determination and resilience that led to this year's 33 C-2A baseball state championship with the 8-5 victory over San Joaquin Delta College in the finals. The Bobcats solidified your place as champions. Throughout the tournament, Saddleback College players showcased extraordinary skill and tenacity overcoming challenges and seizing opportunities with each inning. Turning point of the championship game came in a decisive fifth inning where the Bobcats demonstrated their offensive power rallying to secure a commanding lead. As we celebrate this remarkable achievement, let us not forget the dedication and hard work of our coaching staff. I don't know if Coach McCartney, is he here?
He is here.
Oh, way to go. Congratulations, man. And the staff and the coaching staff and supporters have been instrumental in guiding the team throughout the year. So I believe this is the second state championship in Saddleback College history, the first in 20 years. That's an amazing accomplishment. It's really hard to win a championship at any level, whether it's Little League, AYSO, Pop Warner, Junior All-American, tennis, USTA. It's really hard. And baseball is near and dear to my heart. My son played Division One baseball. And seeing this college, this great college recapture the glory of winning a championship the first time in 20 years, you ought to be very proud, very proud of this accomplishment. And on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I'm being pinged. I will. But I'll, on behalf of the entire Board, Board of Trustees, congratulations to the team, to the coaches, to the supporters, to the staff. Amazing accomplishment. We're so proud of you. And enjoy the moment. Congratulations again. So Coach, I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot. Would you like to say a few words at the podium?
Can you hear me okay? Yeah. Thanks for having us. Pretty remarkable season. Like I said earlier, losing last year in the state championship was tough. And then coming back the following years, we didn't expect it. You guys just started getting hot at the right time. And man, those yellow jerseys we wore were pretty lucky, I guess, right? We wore these, looked like the McDonald's uniform. We had these, these yellow vests that we wore, and we just didn't lose with them. So we wore them. Heck, Dan was watching our laundry at the hotel after games, you know, in the state championship because we had to keep wearing those yellow jerseys. But such a good group. We had a 3.49 GPA as a team, too. And yeah. So a bunch of scholarship signees, you know, Earl Roberts, UC San Diego, Cal Baptist, Texas Tech, I mean, it just goes on and on. And just proud of this group and looking forward to you freshmen coming back. We have a good group coming back as well. And one last thing, my coaches, great job. Man, they worked hard all year and it was fun to work with them. And now we're fundraising for championship rings. Yeah. So thank you very much.
Summer, congratulations. Awesome. So Coach, you, your team, and your staff, come on up here. Let's get a group photo. Well, not to be outdone, I am honored to present to you this evening that we have another, more champions among us. And tonight, I'd like to recognize and celebrate the outstanding achievements of the Saddleback College surf team. Their incredible journey culminated last weekend at the National Scholastic Surfing Association Finals at Salt Creek Beach and Dana Point. And what a spectacular event it was. I wish I was there next year. I'm going to be there for sure. The NSSA hosts a prestigious national surf competition that includes both university and community college teams from across the country. And Saddleback College's own Taylor Stacy, where are you, Taylor? Was named the national women's shortboard champion. Champion. So I grew up in Detroit. We played land sports. But I did look up short bird versus long bird, so I've got a good education. Or I could ask you. So additionally, Saddleback College student Tommy Coleman, where are you, Tommy? Is that you? Achieved an impressive third-place national rank in the men's law, I'm sorry?
I said we'll get him next time.
All right, get him next time. All right, you coming back? All right. So as a team, the Bobcats finished fourth in the nation. That's amazing. A testament to the hard work, unity, and spirit, this follows their incredible success in capturing the state championship in March of 2024. Congratulations also due to Coach Ken Workman, Coach Workman, where are you? All right. For your leadership and your dedication. Thank you. All right. So on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I congratulate the team, the individual winners, the coaches. And like the baseball team that's behind you, we're very proud of you. This is a great college academically, and it's a great college in terms of world-class athletics. So we celebrate your success. And like your predecessor team, we invite you to come to the podium here so we can get a group photo. Unless, Coach, do you want to say a few words?
Real quick, yeah.
Yeah, at the podium.
Yes.
On behalf of the surf team, we're just honored to be here tonight and also just want to congratulate the baseball team. It's an honor to be with them at this, you know, acknowledgement tonight. So thank you to the college for all the support that you've given to the team. In the last four years, we've just seen great success. I know with the surf team and with the baseball team, these are probably, it's almost a mecca of those two activities. So it's an honor to be able to showcase those sports in this area. And, you know, we compete against all the D1 schools and against all the other Cal State schools along the coast. And Saddleback, year after year, is, over the last, you know, five or so years, has been on top. So we thank you for that support and look forward to continuing it. So thank you so much.
Thanks. Come on up.
Ask them if they're coming back. If they're coming back.
He is, Tommy's coming back, he said.
Yeah, Tommy's coming back. Yes. Thank you.
Oh.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you so much.
Like the Academy or the Oscar when they go, that's a.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thanks for coming.
Look at that. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Yeah, they don't play around with trophies.
So am I going to see you guys out when I'm at a Do Ho or Black Hills?
Oh, yeah.
I'm there all the time. Longboard.
You should surf us now.
I probably do. Probably don't recognize it.
Okay, we got a little bit smaller crowd this time.
Can you scoot down just a little bit?
Yeah, yeah. Would you come on in here? You good?
Yeah. Elliot, you good? Does Caitlin Simmer?
Maybe trustee Milczuk, could you?
Oh, yeah. I'm really upset.
You've got another one?
I don't think they'll see it. Because they see the tops of it.
Yeah, yeah. You hold it at your chest level.
It's a balance shot.
It's polished.
Payload is uneven right now.
Exactly.
Is that okay now?
Yeah, that's better. Ready, four, three, two. One, two, three, four. Okay, got it. Awesome. Hey, go again. Thank you all.
All right, teams, we like doing this. Do it more often. All right. Awesome job again. All right. We're now going to entertain public comments. Do we have any requests for public comments? No? All right. Let's turn now to board reports, and I'm going to start with trustee Dak.
All right. Let our, our teams here exit. So I don't have a board report. I'm going to channel Vice Chancellor McDonnell. As I have just finished teaching less than a week ago, and I was pretty much putting all my focus into my last couple of weeks teaching middle school at Ocean View. So I don't have nothing to report.
Oh, they're flying. So we were informed a few days ago that one of our colleagues, Nancy Padberg, has passed away. She, for me, was a great mentor coming on the board. My first, very first meeting where I got sworn in, she nominated me to be vice president of the board. And having not served in any capacity before, I thought that was a great amount of faith that she put in my, my skill set. And I really appreciated that. And she's going to be sorely missed. I know we're going to do something at the end, but just wanted to make sure to say a couple of things. So condolences to her family and, and we feel for them. Other than that, that's all I have.
Well, I'd like to give my report to Nancy, too. So let me just say, say a few words. The recent passing of this esteemed member of the Board of Trustees has left a void in the hearts of all those who knew her. This remarkable woman dedicated her time and expertise to serving this board throughout the 80s, 90s, and early 20s. Known for her toughness, knowledge, and meticulous attention to detail in matters of governance, she was a valued member of our board. Beyond her professional accomplishments, she was also a cherished friend. I really cherish my friendship with her. And she was a loving mother to Nicole and a faithful, wonderful wife to Tom. I also liked her culinary skills, and you should have seen how she decorated her table. It was something to take a picture. I had the privilege of helping her during her difficult time after she suffered that incredible accident. And she had very much like stroke-like symptoms afterwards. Despite the challenges that she faced, she remained determined to meet the rehabilitation goals set out by Mission Hospital. After much effort, we, to find a suitable place for her, because Nicole wanted her to come home, she went to Las Vegas. Ever that independent spirit, she, she wasted no time in finding a way to rent a car and return to her beloved home, where nobody knew about. Nancy was truly a force to be reckoned with, and she had the passion for life and the tenacity in the face of adversity, who inspired everyone around her. She will be missed, but her memory will live on through the legacy she leaves behind. Thank you.
Wow, very well, very well said. Trustee J.
I, I am very pleased to announce that Alyssa Oransky, the IVC Foundation Executive Director, has informed me that their overall goal of raising $1 million for the foundation has been met. What made this especially exciting is that chapter, I mean Charter 100, a longtime supporter of the IVC students, learned of how close they were to the goal and ensured that they contributed enough to make $1 million. All the funds contributed through the IVC Foundation are invested in the students and programs of IVC through scholarships, energy, emergency funds, equipment purchases, bringing in guest speakers, supporting student attendance at conferences, and much, much more. On behalf of the IVC Foundation Board of Governors, I want to thank everyone who made a gift that enabled the foundation to enhance teaching and learning at IVC. If you have not yet made a gift this fiscal year, it is not too late. You have until June 30th. The Board, the Board will set next year's goals at the annual summer retreat scheduled for Friday, August 2nd. I look forward to reporting out the decisions on what next year's goals are going to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Milczuk.
As several of my board members mentioned, I worked with trustee Nancy Padberg from December 1998 to June 2025. And we certainly will miss her very, very much. And so much was said about her. I believe we're planning to memorialize her, if possible, at the July meeting, and I'll say more at that time. I just have to mention that all the board members came to both commencements, and both commencements were wonderful. I thank everyone for the opportunity of allowing me to attend both commencements so that my perfect attendance record at commencement is not ruined. So I appreciate that a lot. And, and all the boards attend the Board's self-evaluation, where we learned that we're all doing well, we all work hard, and try to do our best for our employees and for our students. We're delighted at the good work being done by our colleges and our employees and appreciate the hard work. Everyone at the college worked so hard to do such good work for all of our students, meaning that our two colleges are about the best colleges in, in the world. I went with the Saddleback College, it's called the Saddleback College Irvine Valley College and Embry-Riddle Mars Rover Team to Hanksville, Utah. The team went for a week to Utah. We went in the school van, which is like a 12-hour ride each way, and we stopped at, at truck stops to eat breakfast and McDonald's to eat lunch. And we actually got there and it's, it's like you're being in Mars. You're at the Mars Society area. And it's exactly, it's gorgeous. It's like being in Mars with all the wonderful formations and, and the city of Hanksville has a population of 200, and we're two hours away from Hanksville. So we're really out in the middle of nowhere. But our team, I know I've got to hurry up, our team did fabulous as usual. We scored 17th out of 102 competitors. Were the only community college that got into the, got in. Notable finalists we beat were Cal Poly Pomona, Georgia Tech, Cornell University, Bangladesh in India. And notable non-finalists we beat were UC Berkeley, Caltech, Princeton, and Stanford. So, so the team did great. And these students are so hardworking. They work every Sunday from about 12:30 the rest of the day. They work through Super Bowl, they work through the Academy Awards, they work through Mother's Day. They just are driven and they work very hard. And they're just wonderful, collaborative, hardworking students that just give it their best and, and do really well. And I just thank all of them. I'm sure there are so many other teams at the college that, that works this hard, but these students are just special. The advisors, Dr. Hiary, Dr. Rebka, and, and actually Jason Smith, the, the lab tech, just were on the van with us all the way there and all the way back. They work very hard. The students work night and day at, in, in Hanksville. And it was really amazing. So thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you. Commencements were amazing. Thanks. Congratulations to, of course, the students and then the faculty and the staff and the administrative leadership. I, you know, attended both commencements again this year. Hopefully at some point, we'll try to figure it out, maybe half an hour difference in start time would, would help. But congratulations. They were both incredible events. I was sad to hear about the news of trustee Padberg. Nancy was very unique for those of us who were in the district at the time. And I had just, I was just elected as a trustee in 2012 and met Nancy, actually before I won the election, but afterwards. And I, Nancy was a force. I think she told me how to do just about everything except for, except for vote. She was really unique. For those who remember the times, you probably would have liked her because she ran very efficient meetings. She didn't like people to run on. And I guarantee you the two-minute rule was enforced under, under Nancy. So, which I think we all, we all appreciated. But I, I would say that what I remember most, she loved Saddleback. She really did. I mean, she loved the district, of course, and she loved Irvine Valley College, but she felt connected to Saddleback and, as well as her husband, Tom. And, and I, they attended so many games and with all the Saddleback paraphernalia and, and I mean, she just, and she loved the district. And so I think that was, that was really clear. And, you know, serving 17 years is no, no small feat. And I feel lucky to have served alongside her for, for, for two years. And as trustee Milczuk said, we're planning to do something special next month. But my condolences goes out to her family, her daughter Nicole, who I briefly spoke to, and of course, wish, wish her all the best. But we, I miss her. And even though she didn't like a lot of the, some of the things I said, and let, let me know, but, but, you know, that's, that's okay. It's a, she didn't like the beard, no. I came one day and, what's that? So, yeah, I felt like I had a, a mother at times, which is okay. All right. So with that, I am going to turn it over to ASG, Saddleback College. Christian.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is enjoying summer as it finally starts to get warmer now. I'm glad to be here tonight as officially Saddleback College's Associate Student Government President. Before, I was a chief of staff who would come here of absence of leadership. Then I was president-elect. But now I'm finally ready to formally start to lead my organization and to make substantial change with my peers. I'm also glad to be here with ASIVC President Clarice Encarnacion. We both got to know each other at the ASAC Conference in Washington, DC, advocating for policies to help our colleges and community colleges across California. So we had very much fun, so I'm glad to be here with her. Two weeks ago, I had the utmost privilege of leading Saddleback College and our ASG delegation to Tangshan and Beijing, China, where we got to experience the intangible cultural heritage of that historic nation. We had the opportunity to visit two Chinese high schools in Tangshan and one prestigious Beijing College in Beijing. From meeting, from monuments to night markets to meeting students, it was an experience that I will never forget. My colleagues and I will actually expand on our individual experiences at the July Board of Trustees meeting, where we, with our advisor and director of international students, Angela Yang, on what we learned and what we can take back to our great college campus. Domestically, ASG is in summer mode right now, so we are recruiting students to our many committees and planning for a fall semester of 2024. I'd like to also say my condolences to trustee Pradberg, unfortunate passing. But that is the end of my report. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Clarice Encarnacion.
Hello, all. It is very nice to be with you guys this evening. A few weeks ago, I had the privilege to travel to Hawaii with my VP of DIA, and together we attended the National Conference on Race and Ethnicity. So we had the privilege to learn about Hawaiian culture, and I was inspired by the pledge to our Kiki ambassadors, who are young high school students who strive to implement initiatives to protect the land that they love. We also attended workshops to learn about what other colleges nationwide do and what their initiatives are to make their campuses more equitable in terms of race and ethnicity. I personally, I, I attended the Saddleback workshop, and they did a research project on.
I'd like to also say my condolences to trustee Pradberg, unfortunate passing. But that is the end of my report. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Clarice Encarnacion.
Hello, all. It is very nice to be with you guys this evening. A few weeks ago, I had the privilege to travel to Hawaii with my VP of DIA, and together we attended the National Conference on Race and Ethnicity. So we had the privilege to learn about Hawaiian culture, and I was inspired by the pledge to our Kiki ambassadors, who are young high school students who strive to implement initiatives to protect the land that they love. We also attended workshops to learn about what other colleges nationwide do and what their initiatives are to make their campuses more equitable in terms of race and ethnicity. I personally, I attended the Saddleback workshop, and they did a research project on the undocumented students here on campus. So what they did, one of my favorite projects that they did is they had a map on campus, and they handed that map out to their undocumented students. And what the students would do, they would mark places on campus where they had good experiences and other places on campus where their experiences were less, you know, less enjoyable. So I think that is something that I want to implement for our ASB, and yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Now turn to the IVC Academic Senate, Rebecca Beck.
Hello. Hope all of you are doing well. So I wanted to share with all of you the three goals that we had set up as we began our tenure last year in Academic Senate and how we did with those goals. And so what I did is I created a little list of one standout item per goal, and those are the ones I wanted to share. So our first goal was enhancing our professional development at IVC. And for that one, I'm happy to share that we did work well towards that goal. As you may recall, we had a grant from the IEPI to create a vision, a revised vision of professional development, and we also planned to create a center. And so the highlight there is that, yes, we're working towards that vision, but the professional, professional learning center is now, it's all encompassing. So it's not just for faculty. We have the foundation of our work, the belief that every single one of us at IVC is an educator and a lifelong learner. And so with that, as the foundation, we're going to build on that in the incoming year. And for this, I really want to recognize my colleague, Summer Surpas, which I know many of you have had the pleasure of meeting because she has been the driving force behind this goal. Our next goal was strengthening our faculty engagement, and that is the goal that we will continue to work with more in the incoming year in terms of how do we prepare ourselves to work with artificial intelligence, augmented intelligence, or however you want to look at it. A few months ago, I remember sharing with all of you that we were applying to the AI Institute. We are happy to share we were accepted. So our team of six faculty are going to that, and they're going to engage with that for a whole year. And our last goal is streamlining Senate processes and procedures, and the highlight there was the revision of our faculty prioritization list, which is the list of faculty that we forward to our president as recommendations. So just wanted to share some of the goals and what we did towards achieving those goals. Thanks.
Thank you for that. And, whoa, welcome back to the, I mean, you haven't left the college, but welcome back in your role as Saddleback College Academic Senate President, Dan Walsh.
Thank you. Sorry I was late. I was at my daughter's water polo camp, which, by the way, is way more fun than this. Obviously, I am back. This is my fourth or fifth time as Academic Senate President, and I'm actually serious. Nobody else wanted to do it. And the last time I was here was when we went into lockdown in the spring of 2020. So I'm really happy to be back in these conditions rather than what I left with at these meetings. I spoke to Chancellor Barnes about this recently, that I'm really happy to be back too because this is great district leadership to work with. Let's face it, we've had some interesting board members, chancellors in the past, and that's gone. And I've spoken with all of you individually in the past. This is a great board to work with. It trickles down from there. These are great vice chancellors. I don't think I've ever said that in a meeting, but this is, they're amazing to work with and even trickles down from there. And I noticed that Menhany Efrain is here, and I had to look up his title because I wanted to get it right, Executive Director of Facilities. But if a faculty member is having a positive experience with the Executive Director of Facilities, that tells you something about how well the district is being run. I'm proud to represent the faculty again and the programs at Saddleback College, and I really look forward to working with all of you over the next year or so. Thank you.
Dan, it's great to have you back.
Thank you.
Before I introduce Robert, I just, I wanted to say a couple words. I did learn recently that Melanie Hieri did retire. I have to say that I really enjoyed working with Melanie. She's a wonderful person, and I think she, she cared a lot about the faculty, and she devoted a lot of effort to represent you, and she did so passionately and avidly and with class, and I wish her the best. And I hope in some ways we can stay in touch, but I wish her the best. She did a fantastic job representing the faculty. As I know, you will as well. So the Faculty Association new president, Robert Melendez.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. And as the incoming president, I just wanted to start with a little bit of kind of my philosophy and where I'm coming from. Don't worry, it's, it's pretty quick, so I'm not going to bore you with that. But what I'm looking to do is obviously work with faculty, faculty association, representative council, and the district to understand, advocate for, and ensure that faculty are able to do what they have been hired to do and do best, educate our students. And I look forward to that opportunity with this board, with administration, but also know that although we're going to meet, you know, in the middle, we're going to meet on the same side plenty of times, there are going to be times where we're going to have to have some serious discussion, and I look forward to that debate, and I look forward to trying to advocate for the faculty and all that. I also wanted to point out that Melanie did retire, and I think I'm trying to fill big shoes there, not only with Melanie, but with a lot of the past presidents, but with Melanie, she had such a big and wide role at IVC with everything she did with the reading department, with what she did as she moved over to the ESL side, and then even what she did, obviously, for students and faculty association in general. I'd also like to acknowledge that Jeff Kaufman recently retired, so he's on the board agenda tonight as a retiree. So Jeff was 28 years at IVC. I think he was instrumental in a lot of the kind of success of STEM students at IVC, and he will be missed, and he did a lot for shared governance, not only at the IVC level, but district level, too. And then lastly, I just want to acknowledge the passing of Dr. Jerry Rudman. Jerry passed on May 16th, and he was one of the founding faculty at IVC and helped establish the IVC Psychology Department. Although Jerry retired in May of 2007, anyone that has been at IVC in a length of time since then knows that he never really left. He was teaching, he was, you know, developing programs with the Psychology Department, and then, of course, mentoring students on students' research. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Robert. Again, let's turn to IVC Classified Senate, Ace.
Good evening, everyone. Happy summer. So I just wanted to focus on my report today on the Classified Leadership Institute Conference held in Riverside last June 4 to 6, and I'm actually going to be speaking on behalf of both senates tonight. So both the Senate of IVC and Saddleback sent a total of 19 delegates. It was actually the first CLI conference that was completely sold out, so we were very excited for how big the conference was. And it's the combination of speakers, breakout sessions, and social events were probably, in my opinion, one of the best ones in the last three years. We were also well represented in the breakout sessions. Erlin Ballow, Riley Phillips, Phelps, and myself actually all conducted workshops during this conference, and we also proudly represented the district as we all wore our SOC CD shirts as Chancellor Barnes also spoke as part of a panel during one of the keynote sessions for the conference. And on behalf of the delegates, Chancellor Barnes, thank you for allowing us that opportunity to actually bond with you and as well with each other. It was a really fun time spending time with you all. And lastly, for CLI, for the coveted spirits to competition, we did not win, but we were very close. I had a very reliable informant tell me that we were the first runner-up, a difference of three points from Grossman College. And lastly, this Thursday, our IVC Classified Senate will be holding its summer retreat, leadership retreat, where we will actually be working on our goals for the next academic year.
Thank you for that. Now, Saddleback College, Classified Senate.
Good evening, trustees. I want to share that we had success bringing back the flower sales at commencement this year. We sold out and made a profit, which will allow us to officially bring back the classified and student scholarships provided by Classified Senate, which we are really excited about, many thanks to our foundation, who have been great partners to work with as we reinstate these scholarships. As this is my last board meeting, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to all the amazing leaders on the Classified Senate executive team who have worked incredibly hard and have been such a joy to work with, and thank you to our college president, Elliot, for the ongoing support, mentorship, and guidance that you provided. I also want to thank my colleague, Ace, at our sister college, who has been awesome to work with, and thank you to all of our district colleagues and each one of you board members for graciously allowing me the opportunity to represent Saddleback Classified Professionals. Lastly, I want to thank my supervisor, Karima Feldis, for all of the support while holding a leadership role. It has been an honor and a privilege. I love this college so much, and I'm so excited to now work with Erlin as incoming Classified Senate President, and I know that she will continue to make a positive impact on this campus. Thank you all.
Well, Chantel, thank you for that. I can say that I've been fortunate to be president at a time when you were also heading up the Classified Senate, and you always came prepared to every board meeting. It was clear that you cared, and it's obvious tonight that you cared, and we're going to miss you, and thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you. I apologize for the tears, but everyone that knows me knows I wear my heart on my sleeves, so it's not a surprise, but it's been an immense joy, so thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay. CSCA, Scott Green.
Good evening, trustees. We are getting ready for our CSA Conference, which will be next month, the last week of July, and part of the program is called Education Days, where all of us will be attending the different courses that are going to be taught as we continue to find out ways to remedy some of the issues that still are found in education. The more that we know, the more that we can serve our students. I also wanted to briefly give a melancholy tribute to one of our classified professionals, Scott Smith, who is the lead mechanic in transportation at Saddleback College. I got to know Scott a bit because he worked very close to me, and I found out that Scott served in the Vietnam War as a mechanic. The Vietnam War, which is, to a lot of U.S. soldiers, there were reasons not clear why they were there, but Scott, like other soldiers who served there, the reasons didn't really matter. What mattered was service. There were a lot of soldiers who remained alive during the Vietnam War in the area where Scott served because of the job he did to make sure that they were safe. He took home that same dedication when he came to Saddleback College to make sure that classified professionals, faculty, and especially our students were safe, and we're going to miss him very much.
Thank you for that, Scott. I don't believe we have anyone here from POA? No? All right. And any board requests for reports? No? I'm sure the audience is disappointed. We don't have a public hearing. I don't see that. We did have some resolutions or certificates. We did that at the beginning to recognize the baseball team and the surf team. And, but we don't have any resolutions to consider, so we're on to 7.1, Board Policy Revision for Approval. Motion from trustee Prendergast. Second from trustee Milchiker. Any questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. Item carries on a six-to-zero trustee yes vote. We're on to 8.1, the 2024-25 Tentative Budget Presentation and Approval. And I think we have someone who's going to present.
Amrietta, if you wanted to start, or if you just want me to kick it off?
Go right ahead.
All right. Good evening. Connie Kavanaugh, Executive Director of Fiscal Services. I'm here to present our tentative budget for the 2025 fiscal year. It's hard to believe that it's almost here. Make sure I got this right here. Click. All right. Just as a reminder, we bring forward to the board twice a year budgets. We have a tentative budget that is required to be approved prior to June 30th, so that we have appropriations set aside to begin our fiscal year in July. So that's what's being presented tonight for approval. We will bring back again the adopted budget in August. That will include all of our actual expenditures for the fiscal year of '23, '24, in addition to the most recent final information with the state adopted budget that will take place by June 30. Just a quick reminder of the philosophy that the board and the district has for our budget development. We always want to make sure that we're wise and prudent in the use of our public resources, that we promote financial stability and strength, and that we maximize, obviously, the educational opportunities for our students. I won't read these all to you. These are the board, or sorry, the Budget Development Guidelines the board adopted back in January. Those come before the board each year so that we have all of our goals set in place as we develop the budget. Just to highlight a couple, the reserve or economic uncertainties, as you know, we have a board policy that strives to make sure we're fiscally responsible and stable and have adequate reserves. That will be covered in some more detail on a future slide. And again, our allocations to our colleges and our district services are a big part of our budget through our DRAC model, and that will also be addressed in a future slide. Oops, wrong way. Okay, so just a quick overview of all of the funds that are incorporated in our tentative budget. The bold item at the top is the Unrestricted General Fund, what we call our operating budget. So that's really where the lion's share of the expenses are recorded, revenues are received for all of our unrestricted purposes that are not specifically tied to a program or categorical funding. The majority of our ending balances, if you look to the far right, that column represent, are represented in our capital outlay fund and our trust funds. So we have our pension stabilization trust, as well as our retiree benefits trust. So that's where the majority of our, our ending balances are, and the rest, that $95.4 million is represented in our operating fund budget as an ending balance. So the assumptions we used as we developed the budget, we use our SCFF, the Student-Centered Funding Formula. Again, we're not funded through that by the state, but we do use it as the foundation of our resource allocation model. So we applied the 1.07% COLA. We actually had growth funding this year, so we've incorporated the 0.1% growth that we are, is, I don't know what the word I'm looking for. The state sets aside for us as an opportunity for growth funding. We have increased our property tax revenues up 4% based on just our historical trends and what we've seen specifically in the last five years. So that represents, it's included in our basic aid allocation of just over $111 million. We've budgeted on the restricted lottery at 4.9 million, and again, that's based on estimated lottery sales at a per FTEs amount. And we have also budgeted our Education Protection Act, our EPA revenue. We receive $100 per FTEs, so based on our projected FTEs, we've budgeted 2.7 million. I keep going the wrong way. On the expenditure side, we have budgeted for all of our existing staffing and moving them on step and column as appropriate, and we have also built in and anticipated negotiated increase based on COLA. So that will, obviously, if we have any further information prior to adopted budget, we would update that. If not, we would continue to anticipate some type of funds to be set aside for that negotiated increase. The pers rate has been established at 27.05%, which is a slight increase from where we were in the '23-'24 fiscal year. The STIRS rate is set statutorily right now at the maximum at 19.1%. We have budgeted health and welfare benefits for tentative at a 10% increase. We are, we have finally received all of our final rate increases on our benefits, and so they're substantially less than 10%. So the good news is the adopted budget will be able to adjust those down to the actual rates that we will see for the increases. Our unemployment insurance rate continues to be 0.05%, which is great. And our budget for tentative included 1.24% for workers' comp rate, but we've actually just heard back on our rate for workers' comp next year, and that came down 0.1%. So at adopted, we'll be at 1.14%, which is a good reflection that we're a safe campus. So for reserves, as I mentioned before, most of those are in our other funds, but for the general fund, we make sure that we set aside, we have a board policy that says because we opted into EPA or ECA, sorry, the emergency condition allowance, we were required to set aside the equivalent of two months of operating, operating costs in our reserve. To do that, we made sure that we set aside the 7.5% that's based on the DRAC model, which is just under $19.5 million. We set aside out of our college and district allocations an amount at least equal to 3.5% of our unrestricted operating expenses. And then additionally, we set aside And then additionally, we set aside 20% of our property tax collections to make sure as a contingency should property tax collections come in less than anticipated. So the sum of all of those is, first, for the economic uncertainties, it's just under $29 million, and then the reserve for basic aid is $17 million. We like to show this just kind of pictorial, just so we can kind of see how we allocate our funds on our unrestricted side of our budget, our operating budget. So you can see, I won't read through each one, but the total allocated amount is $427 million, and then the pie chart represents where those funds are distributed. The good news is the majority of the funds go to the colleges, as they should, and we also have quite a bit set aside, the contingency as part of our reserve. That's the amount that's the 7.5% of our DRAC model. But we do have adequate reserves set aside, but additionally, fund our colleges and our district services adequately to make sure that we're operating and meeting the needs of our students. So the DRAC model calculations, again, I won't read through all the lines. Just starting at the top, we start with, per our board policy, we start with a calculated SCFF allocation that we would be receiving should we be funded through SCFF. So for our district, for '24-'25, right now, it's anticipated with the COLA, just over $218 million. The colleges have estimated what they expect to receive next year for the non-resident tuition, so that's that second line item there. And then we take all of our district-wide revenues, both local, state, and federal, and we incorporate those in the DRAC model to allocate back out to the colleges and district services. Those are represented on those next three lines. Just as a note, the site local revenue also includes the amounts that we are funding back to each of the areas based on the pension stabilization. So those increases in our rates since the '15-'16 fiscal year, where we agreed to pay the difference in those rates. So the total allocations on the yellow line there represents sort of the ongoing portion of our DRAC model of what each location is supposed to receive, starting on the left with Saddleback, then IBC, DS is District Services. The general expense column, we set aside those funds that represent services provided district-wide. So they include property and liability insurance, internal auditor, Title IX compliance, things like that that serve all the components of the district. And then again, we do the contingency, which is the 7.5%. The one-time funds and the ending balance, this year, a lot of that was represented by, we true-up each year our SCFF calculation based on what our actual FTE is, FTEs, sorry, and any COLA increases, and then we redistribute that out plus or minus back to each of the constituents, the colleges and district services. So this year, because we had such growth in FTEs that we weren't anticipating the '23-'24 estimated portion of this, we're giving back additional funds for SCFF for '23-'24. So that second yellow line represents the total sources of funds available for the colleges and district services this year, and then we add back just for the location ending balances. Those are the anticipated ending fund balances as of tentative budget. So the green line there represents our total DRAC allocation for the '24-'25 fiscal year. So if this feels like it's already outdated, because I know Amri was feverishly reading the legislation, I think they've come to agreement. I have not had the luxury of reading that. I don't know if she has anything to add, but as we all know, they have to statutorily meet the deadline to pass a budget, the legislature, but then there's a lot of wrangling that happens behind the scenes to hammer out the final trailer bill and see what's actually going to roll out for us, which it sounds like maybe they've reached. But at the time we prepared this, this is what we knew, that we were going to solve the problem again with some cash deferrals that we've seen in the past. The budget shortfall would be addressed by paying us later, which fortunately for us doesn't have a big impact. They are, or they were, going to fund some expanded nursing programs, and I know I've already seen some communication from the chancellor's office soliciting applications, so I know that one's rolling out. They did take away some of what was proposed in the governor's January proposal in regards to some of the services at the chancellor's office for e-transcripts and cloud data platforms. And they were going to provide some additional one-time funds for some of the financial aid offices to help support some FAFSA applications. And again, don't know what happened, but they were going to suspend Prop 98, at least for this year, in order to fund education below the statutory minimum, which I think might be one of the few times in my career I've seen that happen.
Yeah, so Connie, I'll just kind of.
Yeah, jump in now.
Jump in now. So what's on the screen right now was what was approved by the Assembly on July 11th and voted on on July, or June, sorry, June 13th. But now, on Saturday, June 22nd, that has all been updated. They had the conference committee, and they came to agreement with the governor. And so on that first line, that $231.7 million is now $246.7 million in cash deferrals for '25-'26. One of the fun ones is they also are deferring over $446 million from '23-'24 to '24-'25. Not quite sure how they're going to do that since '24-'25 is already over and the cash has been distributed. So I think it's just a bookkeeping line item shift for the state. They can do that, we cannot. As far as the second bullet there, that all remains as listed. The third bullet, there's a change. So the e-transcripts has now been funded, the $12 million, but they're taking it from the Integrated Technology Grant. So similar with how they're shifting the funding for the nursing and the low-income workers from Strong Workforce, they're doing the same thing for the $12 million for each transcripts that will come out of the Integrated Technology Grant that already exists. The Common Data Platform has not been funded, so they did eliminate the funding for that. The one-time funding for the financial aid offices remains. They did suspend Proposition 98, which will create an $8 billion maintenance factor that is going to help the Proposition 98 calculations in future years. So with all of that, the '24-'25 budget for Prop 98 is $115 billion, which is $6 billion higher than what was in the May revise for the governor. They took money out of the Public School System Stabilization Account. And I think one of the interesting things of what they did is they added in language that is going to require colleges and districts to provide supplemental information to the chancellor's office, because now they are going to be required to do reporting on summer enrollment data, changes over time related to performance metrics and projections based on potential changes to the supplemental allocation. I think the reason the summer enrollment data is important is because there's a lot of talk at the state level to eliminate what we call the summer shift in FTEs reporting. What that is, is districts have the choice. If a class starts before July 1st, but the census date is after July 1st, then districts have the choice of which fiscal year they want to report those FTEs in. It's referred to as the summer shift, and I think the legislature wants to get rid of the summer shift. So what they're trying to do is to find out how many FTEs are reported in fiscal year '23-'24 that has been shifted. So that, when they're saying summer enrollment data, that's kind of what they're referring to. They're trying to get a handle on what's happening with that. So those are the major changes that occurred to this slide as of Saturday.
Interesting.
For that update.
Did you say they suspended Prop 98, or did they say they reinstated it?
No, so when they suspend it, it's, it's a way for them to meet the state's obligations and not be required to fund districts at the calculated amount for Proposition 98, but then catch up at a later date. Because statutorily, they are required to fund Proposition 98 based upon the general fund revenues that have occurred. When they don't have enough money to do that, their only option is to do what they call suspend Proposition 98, meaning we're not going to fund it at the level we're supposed to be funding it, but we're going to catch up in the future when we have more revenues. And so that's what that $8 billion is.
I mean, because Prop 98, of course, was a ballot measure in the state, and it was passed, you know, with the split for the community colleges and the K-12, but I'm surprised they're allowed to suspend it, but that's okay.
Yeah, they're allowed to suspend it. They're not allowed to not fund it fully. And so the May revise was not funding it fully. CTA indicated that they were going to sue the state if they did that. And so the legislature came through and said, okay, well, we'll suspend it, which creates what they call a maintenance factor that then the state is required to fund in the future. So you don't lose the funding out of Proposition 98.
Well, that's good. Thank you. So we've been closely monitoring the state budget and just got the hot-off-the-presses update. So now we will have our final information that we need to prepare our adopted budget with the, all the trailer bill language and the highlights Amri shared as they relate to our budget. We have, we're persistently in monitoring enrollment trends and making sure that we are adequately projecting our FTEs and how that impacts our revenue allocation. And then feverishly, my department is working very hard to close out the '23-'24 fiscal year simultaneously with developing the budget for '24-'25. It's a busy time, but we want to get it right. And we will bring back to you at our August board meeting the adopted budget. Does anybody have any questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have two questions.
Go ahead, Trustee Milchiker.
Okay, thank you. You know, the Student Center, the SCFF, Student Center Funding Formula, for a few years, districts were held harmless because they had changed that. It was new. So I was wondering if they held it harmless, that's number one. And number two, do we receive any money for it? Because we're a basic aid district, or is it just like a thing that we fund our colleges through the DRAC model with?
It is the mechanism we use to distribute our revenues. We don't actually get any of the funded. They do do the calculation for us as if we were funded, so it's a great way for us to cross-check our calculations against theirs. There is a variety of provisions for stability, hold harmless. The most recent one is for the '24-'25 fiscal year. That's kind of the new floor. So you will never be funded at less than your '24-'25 calculated SCFF. So as we project the futures, we look at all the different stability opportunities, and we have been in and out of stability at different iterations of the SCFF calculation during our budget preparation and as we work through those with our DRAC committee. So currently, we are not. The good news is we grew a lot, so we're actually.
That's good news.
Growing, so we're not up against that, but we will. Oh, she's saying no, because now remembering we had stability. Because last year, when we recalculated '23-'24, it was so good that it created stability for '24-'25. So, see, it changed so much, I forgot myself. But that will become our base, whatever '24-'25 actually turns out to be. So there will be some ability for better projections going forward for the colleges to know they will not get less than that. However, other stability numbers have been increased by COLA, and with this new floor, there will be no COLA increases to that. So I think the idea is if your calculations with COLA, you know, should get you out of that hole versus being held to sort of a minimum. But when we go to do our final calculations for adopted, we'll see where we are with our FTEs projections and enrollments and see whether or not we will actually be in stability for the adopted budget.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, interesting.
Any more questions?
I think that's it.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions? Excellent job, both of you. Do we want to have someone move the item?
So move.
Motion from Trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second from Trustee Jay. Let's go ahead and vote. The tentative budget is approved on a six to zero trustee yes vote. All right, we're now on to the consent, oh, I'm sorry. On 7.1, Trustee Witt did request an opportunity to ask a question, and I, and that's, I missed that.
Thank you so much. I'd like to go to the three policies that are in this section. I'd like the board to look at them, 7131. I just wanted to ask why we took it down to this one sentence, because if I was new to the campus, or even I've been here for a few years, I liked the information that we had in our prior policy. And now we just say you go to the management team's salary schedule. And I'll do, I understand that it's important that we get it right. It's right in both places, but I believe that the more information you have, the reader is able to understand it better. And this is for management. It's 7131.
I don't think I understand the question.
So the information that was stricken has been moved to the administrative regulation. So the information is still there. What we're trying to do is have the philosophy kind of in the policy, and then the details behind that policy will be in the administrative regulation. So when you pull up, and when anyone pulls up Administrative Regulation 7131, they'll see the information on when it's a new employee, where they're placed, and how they're placed, when they're promoted, you know, how the amount for placement on the steps will be calculated using that same 5.5% that's mentioned in the promotion, as well as student emotion. So the language has got moved from the policy to the reg.
To the reg, okay. Would you, would you put another sentence in saying where you could find it? I'm just looking at, as the reader, and then thinking of being a new faculty or a new manager, where can I find all the information? It's a lot to read in all those policies.
There is. No, I'm going to be probably biased here, but as someone who reads all of the policies and regs, I know to go to the reg for the details.
All right.
When the policy, but that's why I said I'm going to be a little bit biased just because that's me. But I think most managers do know that the detail is in the regulations rather than the policy.
Okay.
Yeah, some head nods.
And I know we had this conversation, I know, Trustee Rydel, you had asked me about this, and so chat it with the team, and that is the response, that it's in the administrative regulation. And when managers are hired, they get that information in different ways, shapes, and forms, so it's not just the policy they're looking at.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. The next one would be the same reason, because it would be in the regulations then? Change in the position? At first, I thought it had to be with the 5.5%, but that's normally 5% all over. So we just got rid of that totally?
Correct. We deleted this, sorry, we deleted this policy, and that language has been moved into the administrative regulation.
Okay. And then the third one, 7380? I think I'd like to have more time to review this, because when I read this, I thought about, well, what's the right to retire? Meaning, what's the, if someone had a problem, do they still have a right to retire from administration to faculty? And, you know, where did this come from? I don't know, when you read it, it's, I hope it doesn't sound retaliatory, but I'm always, I'm always looking for the employee.
So it's my understanding that the Board of Trustees does not feel it appropriate to pay a lifetime medical benefit for an employee that has been involved in serious misconduct. So with this change in the policy, the board still retains its right, because it says, unless otherwise approved by the board, what this allows for is the ability for a management team member to be treated just as a tenured faculty would be, because the Faculty Association has agreed and demanded the same language in the management policy as we just negotiated in the faculty contract, which is if a tenured faculty member is terminated for cause, meaning serious misconduct, they have the ability to resign or retire prior to being served with a notice of termination. Robert, correct me if I'm wrong. And, but after the notice of termination is served, they have to sit through the entire hearing process, and only if the hearing is in favor of the employee will that individual be subject to medical retiree benefits. If the hearing is. If the hearing is determined to be on the side of the district in favor of terminating the employee, then that employee loses their ability for lifetime medical. It's a benefit that's not going to be granted to everyone based upon good conduct, essentially, for management team.
So you said, when you, you just clarified, I think, just now, when you say misconduct, you mean termination for cause?
Termination for cause. We are not, we are not talking about someone's contract not being renewed. We're talking about misconduct that has led the, the district and the board
But misconduct is a broad term. Do you mean termination for cause?
Correct. Termination for cause.
Okay.
Just a point of order, Terry. We had them last month for review and study.
I know that.
You said you wanted more time with it. We had them on.
Well, I understand that, but it was just me. I would have, I would, what I was thinking, I like to talk it over, table it and like to talk it with, talk it over with the board.
Well, I believe you just voted on it already tonight.
I know. I'm sorry.
And she did have a question and and I should have called on her and have her ask her question at that time.
So I also want to clarify that when we negotiated the agreement with the Faculty Association, the Faculty Association essentially demanded that managers would be treated similarly. And that if a manager engaged in misconduct, the manager would not retain their right to lifetime medical unless the board agreed to some sort of
The board always has that ultimate discretion if the board decides to provide a lifetime medical benefit, even in the case of termination with cause.
That is correct. Always. Okay.
If I can, I just reiterate that that was the kind of understanding for Faculty Association, too, that this was the desire of the district as it relates to retirement benefits. And when that did get presented, it was Faculty Association's view that managers should be treated the same way that was being asked for faculty to be treated in this situation.
Correct.
Yeah.
Sure. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're back on schedule to the consent calendar. So do we have any polls? Items? You want to poll? No? All right. Need a motion?
I'm over the balance of the consent calendar.
Motion trustee Prendergast?
Second.
Second trustee J. Let's go ahead and vote on the consent calendar. The consent calendar is approved on a unanimous six to zero trustee yes vote. Moving on to business services, 10.1, Saddleback College Puente Project Cooperative Agreement, Regents of University of California. Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion from trustee J?
Second.
Second trustee Dack. Any questions? No? Okay, let's vote. The item carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote. 10.2, Saddleback College and IVC Facilities Rental Rates Schedule. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion trustee J?
Second.
Second trustee Milchek. And I had a question just, or basic question, I guess. And maybe there's no one here from facilities from either college. I'm just curious, are there people? How are things going? I mean, are we seeing an uptick in rental, facility rentals, the same, less?
Sean, can you head to the podium?
Sorry.
This is Sean Revelle, who manages rentals for facilities at Saddleback College.
I know Sean. He took me around campus.
Good evening. So we are, we have a full schedule with athletic rentals, but not so much on the classroom rentals, interior spaces. And a lot of it has to do with the change in the SAT testing. That used to be a lot of the rental for the, the classrooms with the rules that they're having.
Thanks, Sean. IVC?
Good evening for IVC. I think it's picking up slowly. And we're just looking forward to the utilization of our new facilities. We have the new Arts Village, the outdoor learning labs, as well as the live terraces where with the new technology. So we'll be focusing, especially after the approval, hopefully of today's agenda, to implement those rates and start marketing those facilities.
You just took the answer to one of the questions I had about terms of, are we doing active marketing of, at both colleges for the facility rentals? Yeah.
Yes.
You plan to? Saddleback as well? Marketing?
We do marketing, which I would not want to confuse as advertising. So we're out there in the public and people know about our facility. So it is marketing. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Debbie. All right, let's go ahead and vote. Item is approved on a six to zero trustee yes vote. 10.3, FY 2026, 2030, Five-Year Construction Plan, Initial Project Proposal and Final Project Proposals. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion from trustee J?
Second.
Second from trustee Dack. Any questions?
Yes.
Trustee Prendergast?
So I'm, I just want to get a little clarification. It's my understanding that we're in the process of developing a new five-year master plan and a five-year, like, like didn't the other one is coming to an end? So we were looking at starting to survey and look into a new plan?
So in, in 2020, we did the full-scale Facilities Master Plan that was developed.
Right.
We are currently using that one, however, every year. Going through the college committees, they kind of make changes based upon reprioritization that occurs, current needs that the campus may, may or may not have. And so it shifts every year. So what you're seeing here is the results of that shifting that has occurred from the original Facilities Master Plan that was developed in 2020. This is our new five-year plan of what we want to do. We are planning on going out for an RFP for a strategic plan, a new strategic plan. And then with that, we will be looking and determining whether or not we need to update our Facilities Master Plan. But what you have here tonight is what has gone through both campuses, local, I would say, consultative committee process, as well as the KIC committee at the district-wide level. And then it was what was presented to the board in April for the basic aid allocations. So it's all kind of feeding into that moving forward for 2425.
So anything beyond 2025 is potential changed, or could potentially change dramatically with the new Facilities Master Plan in 2025?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Because our, our Facilities Master Plan that we did in 2020, that was really a 20-year plan. But it changes every year based upon the needs of the colleges.
Got it. Okay.
Just a comment. It was going to be part of my report at the end about strategic planning. But just briefly related to what you're saying, the acknowledgement is that we started to develop our last Facilities Master Plan in 2019, which was pre-pandemic. And then it was adopted and established in 2020. However, just as Emery mentioned, there's an annual kind of implementation plan that happens at, at both colleges and the district. So now that we have our new strategic, we're going to be developing our new strategic plan this year for 2025, 2030, we'll be able to use those strategic directions to help inform what I'll call like a refresh of our Facilities Master Plan. Because it's a new day. Things have changed with regard to the post-pandemic reality. Things have changed with regard to new, new and emerging technologies. And so those will be more robustly factored into, let's say, a refreshed Facilities Master Plan.
All right. Any other questions? No? Let's go ahead and vote. The item carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote. We're now on to 10.4, A Ward of Design Services Agreement for Campus Solar Canopies and Battery Storage Phases II, III, and IV Projects at Saddleback College to P2S. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion trustee J? Second trustee Milchek. I just had a question about the, I think this is the one I had questioned about the number of bids. But I think it was addressed, the more competitive, competition, the better. And I know there was an effort undertaken to do that. All right, let's go ahead and vote. The item carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote. Now on to 10.5, Fine Arts Renovation Project at Saddleback College, awarding a bid to the Smart City Electric Group. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion from trustee J?
Second.
Second from trustee Milchek. Any questions? All right, let's vote. Item carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote. We're now on to 10.6, Repave Parking Lots I, VII, and VIIA at Saddleback College, awarding of a bid to Horizon Construction Company.
So moved.
Motion trustee Milchek. Second from trustee J. Any questions? Okay, let's vote on it. Motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote. We're now into HR. 11.1, Academic Employees and Academic Classified Administrators, Managers, Personnel Actions, Ratifications. Any changes?
No changes but one readout.
Okay.
So you'll see a contract for Sue Donaldson, Director of Adult Education. She is neither a new employee nor is this a new position. We are moving Sue Donaldson from a, from a classified administrator to an educational administrator. So the term of her contract is 7/1/24 to June 30, 2026. Her salary is range 17, step 6, 188, 088. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Well, do you want to, I figured you want to say something. Can we move it and second it and then you speak?
Yeah, sure.
Do you want to move the item?
Yeah, I'll move the item.
Motion from trustee Milchek?
Second.
Second trustee J, trustee Milchek.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention two longtime employees that are retiring, Melanie Hayare and Jeffrey Kaufman. And I really would like to vote no on both of them, but I, I, I know they want to retire, so I'll vote yes. Melanie is incredible in so many ways. She works hard in whatever she agrees to do. She was teaching reading, and when reading was outlawed at IVC, she switched to teach her new position and worked hard at that one. And then she took on the, the job of being president of the Faculty Association. And she put her heart and soul into that and worked really hard and, and took it really seriously. And she, she worked so hard in everything she does. I, I think she probably decided to retire just out of complete exhaustion from all the work she's took on. She cares about things very deeply and she's also a lot of fun to be with. I also wanted to mention Jeffrey Kaufman. When he was being considered for tenure, one other person and I worked pretty hard to get him tenure. It was a long story, a lot, many years ago. And, and we, we were able to do that. And now that he's been teaching here for about 29 years, and he's been a wonderful fellow biology teacher, even though I never taught biology here, I, I feel very, very good about giving him the opportunity to, to be a teacher here for all those years and giving him the opportunity to teach for all of our IVC students. So two wonderful people are retiring and we'll miss them very much. So thank you for all the work that all of you have done for Saddleback, for Irvine Valley College. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other question, comments? All right, we have a motion in a second. Let's vote. The motion, the item carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote. And I should take a moment of personal privilege to note, to thank the Letitia and the marketing team for, should have acknowledged this at the beginning, the new logo that's behind me. And you can see it on display, yes. And also on the podium to my left here, where our guest speakers talk. And then what triggered me is I see the logo, maybe IT had something to do with this, on our electronic agendas here before us. So good job to everyone. All right, let's go to 11.2, Classified Personnel Actions.
No changes.
No changes? Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion from trustee J, second from trustee Milchek. Any questions? No? Okay, let's vote. The motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote. We're now on to Educational and Technology Services, Saddleback College and IVC, Fall 2024 Community Education Programs. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion trustee J?
Second.
Second trustee Milchek. Any questions? Okay, let's vote. The item carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote. Now on to our information items. 13.1, Staff Response to Public Comments from the Previous Board Meeting. Don't think we have any. 13.2, Triple CT Student Trustee Member Election. I guess nominations are this, deadlines this Friday. Board Requested Reports. 13.3, 13.4, Monthly Financial Status Report, 13.5, Facilities Plan Status Report. Now we'll have updates from our administration and governance groups. And I will start off to my right with Chancellor Barnes.
Awesome. Thank you. I have just a few items brief. First, I want to congratulate both of our college for earning seven years of reaffirmation from the Accrediting Commission. Seven years with only commendations and no recommendations, which basically means that our colleges not only meet the standards for accreditation, but exceed the standards in some areas. And this is definitely one of those situations where it takes a village, it takes our faculty, our classified professionals, our administrative team, and our Board of Trustees. And so again, congratulations to everyone. This is like no easy feat and it's, it's wonderful. And I always like to say, we're not just accredited, you know, once every seven years. We're, we're accredited 365 days a year. So I'm really proud that the colleges really embed the standards of accreditation into, to everything that you do each day. So congratulations to both colleges. Lovely. I also, it was acknowledged, ACU acknowledged this, the Classified Leadership Institute, I was, I was invited to serve on a panel and I was able to stay overnight. And it was, I, and I went to Riverside after spending all day in the strategic planning retreat. So I mentioned to our classified professionals, I, I said, I, you know, I'm, I'm not going to arrive till like 8:30 or 9:00. If, if anyone wants to meet me for a nightcap, you know, I'll, I'll be over there, you know, in the area where there's nightcaps. I was like, I'm at a board meeting. Can I say the three-letter word called bar? And anyway, and I was like, who's going to show up? Well, about 15 classified professionals from, from both of the colleges showed up. And we had a wonderful time and spent, I think, yeah, we might have seen the next day. I'm not sure. But, but, but the next day, I was, I was on the panel. There was wonderful workshops. And again, a lot of wonderful learning, but a lot of camaraderie. I personally just really love getting to know all the classified professionals in a really deep way. So congratulations for having such a wonderful conference. But just, it just makes me just so grateful that we just have this wonderful team of classified professionals in our district. So thanks for the invite.
I can tell you're feeling more comfortable here.
Am I?
Yeah.
Because I said bar. Okay.
It's all right.
It was a nightcap at 9:00 PM. And I do have to say, I've gone to a lot of different conferences with faculty, administrators, trustees. But I give you the badge, work hard, play hard. So it's like, I love it. You guys are wonderful. All right.
We're boring, right?
Trustees are, you're okay. All right. It is getting late, isn't it? I'm getting relaxed here. Okay, so, and then I also wanted to, obviously, it was really wonderful to see both of our athletic teams recognized tonight. I personally had an opportunity to spend about half day at the, I think I was there for seven or eight hours one day. And I was wondering like, how long can you actually watch surfing? I didn't know a lot about surfing. It was fantastic. These are wonderful athletes to see them get out there and compete with the other teams. I actually want to take lessons now and I don't even go beyond my ankles. But it was just really incredible to see the athletes and play and the coaches and the families. Just everybody was super excited. So I was super happy to hear that they ended up winning some of the titles. And then finally, I just want to acknowledge, and it's in my report for the board, but I'm very excited because we just had our strategic plan kickoff as part of our district-wide. We have a, an annual planning retreat. We think, I think we had about 40 individuals there from throughout the district, including our own student trustee. But we had classified professionals, faculty, administrators, a potpourri of, of, of everyone there to kick off our strategic plan. So in a nutshell, our existing strategic plan ends in June of 2025. So we will be spending 2425 in the development of our new strategic plan. And just I was starting to allude to it, when we developed our last strategic plan, it was, we, we launched it pre-pandemic. And then it was, it was ratified during the pandemic. So here's an opportunity again to, to look at what's happening now with regard to the post-pandemic. post-pandemic reality and the new technologies and, and other things, and to really deeply engage with everyone to develop those key strategic directions that will move our district forward in the next five years. And I, I love planning, I think, because I'm a Capricorn. And so, and so anyway, but I'm just super eager and anxious to, to get this going with all of you. So thanks to those of you who participated that day. I think we had a lot of great work that we did with establishing what our values are and kind of really kind of setting the foundation to develop our vision, mission, and then again, our strategic direction. So anyway, looking forward to that. So it'll be a nice journey in the next year. And that is the end of my report.
You know you went over two minutes.
Because I keep seeing it, I keep seeing it turn red for everyone else, so I was kind of taking advantage.
All right.
Yeah, it's okay. A little bit, it's okay.
But it was good content. All right. IVC President John Hernandez.
Chancellor Barnes, I think Vice Chancellor McDonough will give you back his two minutes. One, two weeks ago, we held our annual strategic planning retreat. We have for two years in a row expanded beyond college council and invited individuals, faculty, staff, administrators, and students who are in leadership roles. And it was just a wonderful, once again, it was very interactive. We focused on our accomplishments. We looked at where we still have areas of improvement, where to focus in the coming year. And this year's plan, theme was, we are the plan, because in reality, last year, we focused on our individual efforts towards our strategic planning, and now we looked at cross-functional work that is happening across the college. And one of the highlights was to spend a little time celebrating the wonderful successes at the college. And it was just wonderful, the day after we had received the reaffirmation letter, to be able to announce to that group our reaffirmation. And I, I would be remiss if I, if I didn't say something about that. I realize, as Chancellor Barnes has already stated, accreditation is not something that you begin to prepare for as you're writing your institutional self-evaluation, or as you start to prepare for certain deadlines. It is a, a year-long process of continuous quality improvement. And so I, I don't want to take it lightly that both colleges were reaffirmed for a full seven years. When you look at the report of the commission actions, not everyone makes it to that bar. And so we have a lot to be proud of. We certainly know that we have a lot more that we want to continue to do, but I just want to continue the celebration on that. And then lastly, I know we have some staff here from both colleges that have spent, I understand, almost two years working on this facilities rental rate schedule to not only be compliant with the Civic Center Act and our board policies, but I, I know how long sometimes it takes to get things done. And I do want to acknowledge and thank Haley King from IVC, who is here in the audience as well, for her role in helping shepherd it from our campus. Thank you.
I agree. I mean, we, the district published a news release on the accreditation reports. Very impressed. Both of your leadership, the faculty, the staff, the administration, we did have an opportunity as a Board to meet with some of the commissioners, and I think by the time we met them, they were just very happy. And so the meeting went extremely well. So awesome, awesome job. President Stern?
And we both have great teams of faculty and other leaders of the college who lead those accreditation efforts, and we're really grateful for all the work they did to make this happen. Two quick things today, and I noticed that both Chancellor Barnes and President Hernandez went into the red, and that's all I'm going to say. So two quick things. First-
Well, no, Julie was in the, I don't-
Purple, I think it went to. I'd never seen that color. First, we, we love stocking our glass cabinets with sports awards. Make no mistake about it. This is Saddleback, and we have a long history of that. But I was so proud to hear Summer mention the GPA of our athletes at 3.49 in baseball. Surfing, too, not 3.49, but they're surfers. They're, they're doing great, too. And, and we're really proud of that. And I'm just really thankful to our Athletic Director, Dan Klaus, and Dean, and to all the coaches who make that a priority, who see athletics as a way of doing better academically and not the other way around. We're really grateful for that, and that is truly our priority, and we breathe it in that athletics program. Secondly, I just wanted to say something on a bit of a downer note. I have spent much of today working with Vice Chancellor Viscachill and our Police Department in making sure we have protections for a manager who was threatened several times over the course of the last couple of weeks by a student who was suspended for misconduct. And I, I just want to take this opportunity to let the trustees know, and I know, I know you know this already, that these are dangerous jobs that are filled by our faculty and managers and classified professionals. This is a weird time in 2024, and when we support 26,000 students at my college and have X percentage of mental illness, there are things that go wrong, and that puts a lot of people in jeopardy. So I want to acknowledge that for you all, but also acknowledge and thank the faculty and staff and managers who do put their lives on the line every day and put students first and think about students first despite the dangers that they face. So thank you for that.
Well said. All right. Vice Chancellor of Educational and Technology Services.
I have no report.
For that. Thank you. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources.
No report.
No report. Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
I just want to send my gratitude and thank you to both Connie Kavanaugh, my Executive Director of Fiscal Services, and Jackie Hahn, our Fiscal Services Manager, for doing the budget and for everything that they're doing right now with the banner implementation. And now we have year-end closing, and we have budget. So they are working overtime, and I appreciate that. And then also, John mentioned a thank you to the campuses for getting the facilities rental rates to the Board. I think it took a little spurring on my part to get it here tonight, but they did it, so thank you very much.
All right. Well, so many great things happened tonight, so much celebration with the championships and the accreditation. But at the same time, sadness. I think we mentioned trustee Padberg earlier, and now I'd like at this time to close the meeting in honor of an original Irvine Valley College faculty member, Jerry Rudman, who I think was mentioned earlier, who passed away on May 16th after a courageous battle with pancreatic cancer. Jerry joined the district on August 22nd, 1977, before IVC officially became its own college and started building a program that would become the Psychology Department. While Jerry technically retired in May 2007, he continued to teach and mentor student research until 2023. Wow. His efforts to support students extended beyond their time at IVC, as he often served on doctoral dissertation committees as a champion of continuous learning and growing. Jerry was beloved at Irvine Valley College, and this loss is felt throughout the district. Many attended his memorial that took place on May 30th to celebrate his life and impact on our learning community. Rest well, Jerry. Thank you for all you did to make our district what it is today, and may your memory live on. Good night.